For cable access. The time being 7:00 PM. John Theron Hilton and Beverly Christensen Hilton seek a special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 5.4.2, to allow alteration to a pre-existing nonconforming lot and any other special permits, variances, or findings as may be required with respect to the foregoing properties located at 310 Cochasset Street in the R40 residential and agricultural district and is not located in any restrictive overlay district.
Good evening. Attorney Frank Splain, Foxborough, Mass., here representing the applicants and owners of the property. Again, the property is located at 310 Cochasset Street, which is within the R40 zoning district. It lies next to Stockbridge Ridge and across Cochasset Street diagonally from the entrance to the Borough Elementary School. Again, the owners are requesting the special permit under Section 5.4.2 to allow the alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming lot via a land swap of 1,230 square feet of land with their budding neighbors to the north, Daniel and Stephanie Lenehan. So very briefly, what they're doing is this area right here is their property of 1,230 square feet of land to be conveyed to Lenehan's, and Lenehan's property right here of 1,230 square feet will be conveyed to the Hiltons. The lot is a pre-existing nonconforming, and that's why we're here, because of the swap, because the lot contains 12,015 square feet of area where 40,000 is required. It has 115.7 feet of frontage where 200 feet of frontage is required, and a lot width of 97 feet where 134 feet is required. The house is also pre-existing nonconforming because the house has a front yard setback of 26.9 feet where 35 feet is required. Both the side yard and the rear yard meet the setbacks. Again, Section 5.4.2 requires a special permit to allow the alteration of a nonconforming single-family residential structure lot in the event the alteration increases the nonconforming nature of the structure. The Board of Appeals may grant the special permit upon finding that the alteration shall not substantially, shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in which the structure of a lot is located than the existing nonconforming structure of a lot. So the applicant is requesting the special permit to allow them to alter that pre-existing nonconforming lot via a land swap of the area with the Lenehan's, and the purpose of the land swap is for the Hiltons to construct a garage on their property which meets all of the setbacks. A little history of the property, the house was built in the early 1900s. The original lot with this house dates to the May of 1923. That lot contained 8,620 square feet of land with 75 feet of frontage. It was purchased by Beverly Christensen Hilton. At the time, she was Beverly Christensen Jaeger of the property in '87 with her then-husband, Brian Jaeger. Again, that lot was pre-existing nonconforming because it last area and frontage. Beverly and her then-husband, Brian, purchased a parcel B, which contained 3,390 square feet of land and additional 40.76 feet of frontage on Cochasset Street in January of 1999. With that, they had the right to use Stockbridge Road and an access easement over Lot 1 to their property, and also a portion of parcel B was subject to a drainage easement. On that same date, Daniel and Stephanie Lenehan purchased Lot 1A with those restrictions on them. Around '98, '99, the Jaegers renovated the interior and exterior of the house, constructed a new driveway from Stockbridge Road via that easement over 1 Stockbridge Road, built a walkway from the new driveway to the front porch, renovated, removed the driveway off of Cass Street and ceded that area. They also moved their mailbox from Cochasset Street to Stockbridge Road. Over time, the property was transferred from Brian Jaeger and Beverly to Beverly individually, and then eventually to Beverly and John Theron together. In November of 2021, the Lenehan's granted the owners a driveway, a new driveway easement over their property on 1 Stockbridge Road to access 310 Cochasset Street. The new easement was required because the driveway was not located where the granted easement was originally designated. So it was designated on a plan, but it was built off of that. So they needed a new one, but also that original easement was set to terminate once parcel B was ever sold by the Jaegers. So when the Hiltons first came to me, a couple of years ago now, even more, they just wanted to construct a garage. When I did some reviewing of the property and the deeds, I realized that, one, they did not have the right to go to their lot, not through their legal frontage, and also the easement was not in the right area. So we went forward to get the approval from this board, which we did in case number 22-03, which approved a variance from Section 431 to allow access to the property or the new easement, and therefore not through or across its legal frontage from the applicant, which is required in the bylaw. And with the new easement, it took care of where the location of the driveway was, that would be forever, and that their access was legal, not through their legal frontage. So now we're here in front of you in order to ask for this land swap to be approved. Again, the lot is pre-existing nonconforming. You cannot take any land away from it without a finding. With this land swap, it will bring the lot to the exact size it is now, which is about 12,015 square feet of area. So it's an equal frontage area. Their frontage is not diminished in any way. And on a second plan, which I handed out to the board this evening, we have located the garage, which shows that it's set back with the land swap, meets all the requirements, so they don't need any variances or findings from this board or any board in order to do it. So the purpose of the swap is to be able to do the garage. Again, Section 542 requires a special permit to allow that alteration. This board can grant that special permit upon finding that the alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in which the structure of a lot is located than the existing nonconforming structure of a lot, and we don't think it will be any detriment to the neighborhood at all. It'll actually be a benefit. It squares off the lot a lot more than it is currently and allows them to build a garage on their lot that meets all the setback requirements.
There's no physical reconstruction, alteration, extension of the existing house? Isn't that correct at this point?
The existing house will be altered to some extent by the roof, possibly?
The roof over the porch would be tied into the garage itself.
So it would be just tied in?
Correct. But at this point in time, as far as the land swap goes, all we're talking about is swapping portions of property?
Right.
Nothing is happening?
The house.
These are the house?
No.
Okay. Okay. Kim, questions?
No, no questions at the moment. Well, I guess, do you intend to have, use the same, if we were to approve this, use the same materials in the building, the exterior, and then, and what about?
Again, the garage is not before us.
Oh, that's true. It's not the garage. Okay, never mind. Never mind, that's what I say.
Well, we, yes, they.
I use the same wording with you when I talk the other day. Never mind.
It's an impulse.
Yeah.
Yes.
But they intend to tie the look in with the existing house. Yes.
Lorraine, any questions?
No questions.
Kurt?
No questions, no.
Eric, do you have any questions? We can't hear him, but I think he sounds, I think he said, "No questions."
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I said, "No questions." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Scott, any, any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, so, anything else, Frank, you want to add?
No, I just, I met with Scott early on in the process to get his agreement that this was the way forward in order to be able to get the garage on there, and that the land swap did require a special permit.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Second.
You know, because Eric is here, even though he's not voting, I think I'd better take it by, by roll call, just in case. So Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. So here's the issue I have, and the issue has nothing to do with, with the land swap. You're absolutely right that we have a nonconforming lot because it obviously has less than 40,000 square feet of area. Obviously, the, you know, the frontage doesn't meet the 200-foot requirement, but the focus of the bylaws, especially particularly Section 5.4, is with nonconforming structures. And a nonconforming structure could be because insufficient lot area, because of insufficient frontage, as well as, you know, setback violations. So 5.4.2 says that nonconforming, single and two-family structures can be reconstructed, extended, or altered.
Yeah.
There's nothing that's being done of that nature. There's no reconstruction of the, of the home, there's no extension of the home, there's no alteration. What you're doing is reconfiguring the lot.
Yeah.
I don't see that we have authority under that section to, to grant the permit because nothing's happening with the house. I, I think what you need is an A&R. I don't think there's any approval. You're not, in any respect, creating a nonconformity as far as the property goes. You're extending the conforming rear yard, even though you're lessening the currently conforming easterly side yard, it's still going to be conforming. The way you've indicated the garage will be that will conform with, with all setbacks. So because there's nothing happening with the house, and because there is nothing that is being done with the land swap that would create the need for zoning relief, you know, if you had diminished the side yard such as you would need a variance, that would be a different issue, but that's, that's not the issue. I don't see how we can grant a special permit under Section 5.4.2, and I think really what you need is an A&R. There's nothing that we can, we can approve. I have absolutely no problem with the land swap, but I think it's beyond our authority to, to approve that.
Well, there is some case law, because of the way the law is also written, that, you know, structure and lot can be interchanged, and when you have a nonconforming lot, the only way, you can add to it without a problem, but the only way you can subtract from it, just as, you know, like if you have any other dimensional nonconformity, is with a special permit. And even though you're swapping land for land, at some point, you will be taking land away from it, whether it's the first or the second deed on. See what I'm saying? There's always that split second where it's going to be going, and it has been done in this town before. Years ago, it was approved for this type of land swap requirement, because I don't think an A&R plan can do that.
Mm-hmm. You agree with that, or?
I've seen it done in the past, but I'm not aware of it off my, off, off the top of my head, no.
No.
An A, I feel the A&R is a more appropriate method.
Mm-hmm.
Because you are not creating any nonconformity or seeking any relief for the zoning.
There's no relief we can really give. There's no zoning relief, as I see it.
Correct.
Well, it is because we're, we're changing the lot shape, and at some point, we're changing the square footage, even though we're adding it back in.
So the other day, I'm, I'm sitting, or laying in bed, thinking at 2:00 in the morning, if, if I was representing the Hiltons, what, what would my argument be here? And my thought was pretty much what, what you're saying. There's a reconfiguration of a nonconforming lot, and that, in effect, is an alteration. The problem with that, again, though, is, number one, even if I agree with that, number one, again, you're doing nothing with respect to the house, so there's nothing under 5.4.2 that I would see as, as applying. But, but secondly, you're not creating a nonconformity, and you're not increasing a nonconformity, not increasing an existing nonconformity. The nonconformities that exist are remaining the same, and you're not creating a new one.
The square footage on the lot.
Is, is the same, though, isn't it?
Will decrease. This is the way I would put the order of deeds in. Their deed would, deeding it out would go out first.
Mm-hmm.
So their lot goes down for a split second, and then they get the land from the Lenehan's. So you could even, you know, think of it if it was done, you know, a week apart, first they deed out so the lot shrinks, and then it increases.
Can you do it in the reverse order?
Well, if you do it in the reverse order, you'd be adding to it first and subtracting.
Nonconformity at that point.
You know what I mean? Add, subtract, then add, because you're going down and then adding to it, you know? It doesn't really matter, but.
I mean, if you go.
In either case, you're, you're reducing, because in the first, in your case, we're adding to it.
Yeah.
And then we're shrinking it. The second one, we're shrinking, then adding, so. In either case, I think we have to have the ability, the, the approval of a special permit, a finding that's not any more detrimental than, than what's there now.
So what you're saying is that there's going to an increase in the nonconformity as far as the lot size when the Hiltons deed to the Lenehan?
Yeah. So for example, if this was a conforming lot, they were both conforming lots, and they were swapping land, we wouldn't need an A&R plan.
Yeah.
We could just have a land survey or do it, and we record the plan and the deed swapping it. So I, I don't believe, I'd want to look into a little bit more, but this would meet the A&R.
But, but again, we have nothing being done to the physical, nothing being done to the house itself.
No, but there is case law that talks about the statute that, you know, structure and law are interchangeable, for words, and this has been done before, years ago. I was involved with that, I believe it was on Margaret Road.
Mm-hmm.
The only time I saw this was with adverse possession.
What's that?
The only time I experienced something like this was adverse possession or something like that.
That'd be different, yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
Where somebody maintained, took care of a person's lot, and they just actually went to the ZBA and got this swap.
Because you have to get someone's permission to be able to change that pre-existing nonconforming lot to be able to change it.
But again, 5.4 deals with nonconforming structures.
Right.
So it requires a reconstruction.
The statute talks about lots and structures and interchangeable about them.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not seeing, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not, I'm just reading with what we have for our bylaws, structure.
My note was, what is the special permit for, question mark, changes to, is the existing structure?
Yeah.
Kurt?
I mean, that's what it says. I agree with you.
Eric? Eric, thoughts or comments? Eric, thoughts or comments?
I was just pulling up the bylaw again, but no, I don't have anything at the moment. Just trying to take another look at this, but.
Frank, do you need something that you have to put on the record relative to this to have title be clear? I know there's been a lot of, over the years, as you indicate, there's been a lot of, or several activities relative to the property.
Yeah, no, the title's clear.
So do you feel that a decision from us is necessary for title purposes?
If they go to sell at some point, someone's going to look for, or someone could, if it was my partner Florence, she'd be looking for a special permit that allowed the swap.
But does, when you do this type of swap, isn't it on record, though, that both, you know, the swap is agreeable to all parties?
Mm-hmm.
So why, why is that not adequate?
You can't, you cannot decrease the land area for a pre-existing nonconforming lot. So no matter how you do the deeds, you're always going to be decreasing it at some point. So if the deed that goes on first is the deed that they're getting additional land, now their land, is it bigger?
Still not conforming.
And then the deed out is making it smaller. You can't, once you get bigger, you can't decrease it again without, you know, a finding.
It could instantaneously be out of, or out of.
At some point, it will. At some point, you'll be taking land away from it. So if you have a pre-existing nonconforming lot, and you take, you know, area and give it to your neighbor, you lose that pre-existing nonconforming status because, you know, you've taken land away from it. So in this, if you have a 12,000-square-foot lot and you give 2,000 square feet to your neighbor, now you're 10,000 square feet of area, you're reducing it more than it was before, and it's out of conformity even more now, therefore you lose your pre-existing nonconforming status. Would you agree with that, Scott?
The way I'm seeing it right now is, the way you have this planned out, you're going to create a new, a new nonconformity by decreasing the existing lot that's pre-existingly.
At some point, yeah.
And then bring it back to its previous status.
Or you're going, you're going to enlarge it, which you can always add land.
You're enlarging the Lenehan's property at one point. You're not enlarging their land. You're enlarging the Lenehan's, but you're actually subtracting from their land, creating this nonconformity.
Right. And then adding land to it.
And then bringing that land.
Right.
Back, bringing it back to its previous status in size.
Right.
Not in topography, but in size.
No.
Way above my pay grade. My question would be, if an A&R was done, could the planning board approve creating a nonconforming lot at one point? You see what I'm saying? Because it's the same thing, because you're going to be creating that lot, nonconforming, or decreasing a pre-existing nonconforming lot even more, and the planning board could not endorse something like that.
Hmm.
I'm just being devil's advocate here.
Right.
All right. I looked up the A&R handbook for the state of Massachusetts. It sets three standards that must be met in order for lots shown on a plan to be entitled to be endorsement by the planning board, that approval under subdivision control law is not required. One, the lot shown on such plan must front on one of the three types of ways specified, that's about roads and stuff. Two, the lot shown on such plan must meet the minimum frontage requirements. And three, the planning board's determination that the vital access to such lots as contemplated in Chapter 41 otherwise exists. So if they don't have enough frontage, could the planning board, but it's pre-existing, it doesn't get into that stuff. It's more all about access, not about frontage.
Be interesting to read that case law.
Yeah. Yeah. I just can't get over the first sentence. I keep going back to the first sentence, which is, increase in nonconforming nature or increase in habitable floor area by 25% or more, the 5.4.2.
Well, I don't think 5.4.2 applies, and I don't think we have the authority to.
Right.
But I also don't want to create an issue, a title issue, and I'm not sure what the best way to round it is.
I don't know.
I mean, Frank can do some research.
Want to continue it?
I can do some research. 5.4.2 doesn't apply. Let's forget that, but if there's.
Well, no, no, I want to leave that open.
Well, okay. Well, you can leave it open, but I'm going to close it, but go ahead.
You know?
I'm just trying to figure out if there's some way around.
No, no, for the continued hearing.
I'm sorry?
For the continued hearing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm just trying, but I'd like to see if there's some way we could address the issue, and I thought that the A&R was the, the appropriate way to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Some way to address the issue so there wouldn't be a title problem.
Yeah.
And I could do some research, you can do some research, we can probably talk.
Access to the lot.
You know, a little bit, you know, about that in between.
Yep.
Diana, we got a full house on December 21.
We have a lot in December. Can we continue until January?
No. But we'll put this at the beginning. Again, I don't want, as I said, I don't want to repeat myself, but I'll repeat myself. And I don't want to create a title problem for you if, you know, 20, 30 years down the line, you know, you're trying to sell and an issue arises, but I can't grant a special permit under 5.4.2. So if there's a way that, around it, that we would all be satisfied, then I think that'll serve everybody's purpose. Thoughts?
I agree.
Yeah. I, I think I know what you're talking about, and I think I, I know what I can get for you.
I'm sorry?
I think I know what you're talking about, and I think I know what I can get for you to show you, that you can use 5.4.2.
Okay. If you can, great. If not, we can think of something else, even if there's just some case law that, you know, would allow us to, to say we can grant a special permit.
Yeah.
Or finding, whatever, so you have something on record that, that we approved it. Okay? So motion to continue to January 21, oh, January 20, December 21?
So moved.
Seconds.
Again, let me do it by roll call. Kim?
Yes.
And Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Frank, we've got a busy night on the 21st. Right now, unless Diane tells me, tells me, there are others that are hanging out there.
How can I know?
We've got two matters that we're continuing, two other matters that we're continuing, and we have a home occupation. So I think what I'll do, and I'll talk with Diane about it, either this will be first or the home occupation will be first. If the home occupation is first, I'll have this one second.
However you want to do it, that's great.
Okay? Great. We'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again.
You too.
All right. The time being, 7:10 PM. The Guild for Human Services seeks a special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, Use Group F1, to allow a single-family home to be used as a five-bedroom independent living home for residents with disabilities, as well as any other special permits, variances, or findings as may be required with respect to the foregoing. with respect to the foregoing. The property is located at 3 Bailey Street in the R40 Residential Agricultural District. It's not located in any restrictive overlay district. Diana was contacted yesterday? Yesterday by an attorney by the name of Brent McDonald. He's with Nuttner, McLennan &amp; Fish, which is a large Boston-based firm, indicating that he had been retained to represent the Guild. And he sent us a letter that dated November 15th to the Town of Foxborough, Zoning Board of Appeals, regarding Guild for Human Services' application for special permit for 3 Bailey Street, request for continuance. Dear Chair Overrett, Members of the Board, and Ms. Gray, This firm has recently been retained by the Guild for Human Services, Inc., a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation, and the owner of the property at 3 Bailey Street in Foxborough. The Guild for Human Services, Inc., has applied for a special permit for the property, which is scheduled for a public hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals on November 16, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. As discussed with Ms. Gray, this letter is written to formally request that the above referenced matter be continued to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on December 21, 2023. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions concerning this request. Very truly yours, Brent M. McDonald. Motion to continue.
So moved.
Second.
And again, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. And I think, and I spoke with Diana about this today. We'll probably put this one at the end on December 21. What do we have, minutes?
We got minutes. Remember in last month, the September minutes? I thought I emailed you, but I guess I didn't press the button. So, so you have to do September 21st. I sent them after the meeting. And October 19th, Kim sent me edits on one of them. I don't remember which one.
I think it was September.
September, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Eric, any questions with the minutes?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, motion again. All of us vote on this. Actually, Lorraine, take the motion. You haven't made a motion yet.
I move that we approve the September minutes.
Second.
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Any other business?
Can we approve the October minutes, too?
Oh, yes.
Motion to approve the October minutes.
Second.
Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Epstein.
Oh, because you weren't there. Okay. Kurt?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So, so approved. Any other business?
Nope.
Okay, again, we got
Four things next month.
So four. And four in December. Okay.
Okay. So let's have a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So we will see everybody in December, and happy Thanksgiving to you all.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You as well.